For reporting.
Make a motion, second meeting. Second. Hold favor. Welcome everybody, by the crowd. First, uh, this is tonight's signature folder.
Oh, yeah.
We have one item, September cut. That was it. On the second item of manifest. Make motion to approve the manifest for March twenty eight, twenty twenty four. The amount of thirty four thousand, six hundred and forty one dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
All favor.
All right.
Make a motion to approve the manifest dated April fourth, twenty twenty four, in amount of thirty thousand, two ninety three point thirty six.
Second.
All in favor?
I'm all right.
Make a motion to approve the Board of Selectments meeting minutes dated March nineteen, twenty twenty four. All in favor?
All right.
As far as appointments, we had nothing. Uh, review of mail. We had a letter from Freedom Food Pantry. Uh, for, for a thank you concerning all the donated. Hands and everybody else that was provided at elections. And that was nice. Board of Selectmen. With, uh, reports. There, Chuck.
Okay. Um, regarding the. Fort Lauderdale project. I worked with the mayor of gas. Today, um, to. Prepare for moving the LP gas tank this summer. And limiting the amount we're going to put it until then. Contacted EverSource regarding. Possible grants for the building as a result of Level Two Energy Audit we had done in the fall. And I'm going to be doing a follow up. With the New Hampshire Division of Historic Resources. The Moose Blade Program, they actually have a state Arts Council Grant Program. And I found out this morning that we might be eligible to apply for a grant that might help us fund doing the renovation to the bathrooms to make them ADA acceptable. Get a lot of homework regarding the snowstorm stuff, but I think we're going to get into that, so I won't bother to do any more detail on that. And, um, that's it, boss.
Well, obviously, I'm going to address the letter from, I believe it's Paul. Is it Paul Barlow? Paul's that letter from you?
Yeah.
So I'm going to go point to point and might answer some of the people's questions while you're in the room. So, obviously, the, the point, uh, the first point you make is about people staying home and stuff. I can, you know, agree with you a hundred percent. There are people that just can't stay home, right? We all have jobs. There are infrastructure that operate twenty four seven. Um, they're not just Monday through Friday jobs. Um, for those of you that are aware, we did have a very productive meeting with the contractor, the police department and the fire chief. Um, prior to this meeting today. And it was about what went wrong with the previous storm and what we're going to do better moving forward with this upcoming storm. So to address, uh, some of the things that Paul has brought up, uh, so there are forty four miles of road in the town of Effingham. It's about fifty fifty dirt to tar. So you do have to plow both ways. So there's eighty linear miles, lane miles of road that we maintain. Um, it was brought to our attention through that meeting today that our most recent updated that was signed and adopted. June sixteen to twenty twenty three, winter roads and inclement weather policy, um. We had previously asked for this to be put up on our, um, town website. And it's, it's brought to our attention and it's still the previous one that was existing, um, in this letter, Paul, and, and some other people have mentioned. It makes reference to, uh, the state, um. Uh, bear with me for a second. I gotta find that part, but. The previous contract over the years discussed. And it reflected to the state's winter road maintenance policy, deal with these. We adopted our own. So one of the things that we've learned in the past, um, going through the NHMA's classes on knowing your territories and winter road maintenance and stuff. The town is more liable if they don't adopt their own policy. If you just. Piggyback somebody else's policy like we were doing over the years, the town is more liable. So we wrote one last year and adopted it, and it addresses a lot of these issues. Uh, mainly, um, again, to, to Paul's letter, the types of roads, type one, type two interstates and things like that. Uh, obviously, we don't have those types of roads. We don't have any interstates in town, the, the, that we maintain. We have class five. Um, roads and highway to summer cottage. That is basically, that's all we have here. Class five roads and highways to summer cottage, which is still class five, but certain sections of them do not have to be maintained year round without them reverting back to a class six. So, uh, Wilkes and Swamp Road, Molly Philbrook Road, um. Those are the two main, or I thought my head are, um. Highway to Summer Cottage. Those were adopted in two thousand and fifteen. Um, as far as inspecting the vehicles for the contractor. The Board of Selectmen at the time last October, we did do a vehicle inspection. Part of the vehicle inspection was the vehicle inspections, the registration of the vehicles, everything was intact. There were some that were in the process of still being built. And ready to go, but the Board of Selectmen did do a vehicle inspection. Um. Due to the nature of the winter. This is from the contractor and this is. And I'll let these gentlemen chime in if they want to, um, but this is coming from somebody that does this for a living. It has not been a typical winter. The roads are extremely, extremely soft. There is no frost in the ground. So to put a vehicle. That we requested and has and have requested over the years to do maintenance on these roads. It's too heavy for these roads. They'll sink in the roads when they're trying to plow them. So you just can't travel down the road with that. So you're having to use smaller vehicles. That's why we're seeing smaller vehicles. And I understand the public's frustration. You see a pickup truck go by or one ton go by. Um, and what a lot of people don't realize is when you see a truck go by, if it doesn't have a dump cart on the back, it must be just a pickup. Well, they do actually make three quarter ton. Or excuse me, one ton vehicles that are in a fleet side conventional pickup truck style body, just so everybody's aware. The GBW is a lot larger and is the same. It just doesn't have a dump cart on it. Um, but because of the way the winter has been, the roads are too soft. We can't put any huge trucks on these roads. You just can't. Um, it tears up the roads and this storm that's coming, just so everybody knows, is going to be worse. And the reason why I say that is the previous storm, although we got two feet of snow in some parts of town. The week prior to that, it was below freezing almost every single night. It was down in the, in the teens. We did, we're not afforded that luxury of the storm. Since last Sunday, it has barely got below freezing and it rained, so the roads are even softer. So you're going to still see pickup trucks. The vehicles that were in question that were on social media said there were pictures of, they have been registered. Before this storm, we will have copies of all of those current registrations and inspections. There is. A ten year, a ten gate grace from the time you. Register vehicles before it has to be inspected. Even still with that grace period, the contractor is. Doing his best to, this afternoon and tomorrow to get the vehicles inspected, but they were registered as of yesterday, the two vehicles in question that were on social media. And again, that falls to. You know, the other vehicles that we inspected, they're ready to go. And they're registered. They can't put them on the road. You can't put a truck that weighs forty, fifty thousand pounds before you put anything on it. On these dirt roads. And with fifty percent of our roads being dirt. It's, you know, you, you're to do that. Um. Let's see, uh. Phone number to call when there's a problem. Um, I have made, um. Every attempt to make sure that everybody in this town knew, you can call me. You can call my cell phone. I handed my card out, um, and I'm not going to lie. I may not be able to get to you because I'm doing the same thing. I'm driving a plow truck. I plowed for twenty nine straight hours this last snowstorm. Not looking for a pity party, but I'm just telling you the facts. And the facts are, I did plow for twenty nine hours myself and parts of my route, they just plain and simple don't have service.
Chris, can I add that? You also have the chief again.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, but if you leave me a message or you text me, I can, I will get back to you as soon as, so my route does this. So usually when somebody texts me or calls me, I'm like this. And then when I get back up here, then I try calling. Anybody that's called me before, the chief can attest to this. We were playing phone tag a little bit this last snowstorm. I'd get to a point where it was a high ground and we were communicating. You still can communicate through us. You can communicate from the Bay County Dispatch. And we will be in touch. There is, there is no way that there is not. There is. There, there's always a way to get a hold of us. Um. It, it, it doesn't matter and. You can call the town hall, obviously during the day if they hear, but, uh, you can, you can call me directly and you can call. Dispatch and they'll get ahold of the contractor or the chief. Or, yeah, sorry, or any of the other officers that are on. Sorry, I shouldn't have just said the chief, so.
Both chiefs.
Just dispatch never shut down.
Correct.
I'm hoping that the high winds don't hit us such as both of the rest of. I don't for hoping it wouldn't snow at all. Sorry, I'm going to go back through the letter, make sure I didn't miss anything. Paul, please jump in if you have anything that I've forgotten. Um, oh, I shouldn't, I shouldn't have said that. That would have to go through the chair and I apologize. I can't give you permission to talk. Um. Yeah, so you did mention the answer machine. So, um, yeah, again, you can call dispatch, you can call me, um. During off hours and I do and will get back to any phone calls. One thing I do not do. Speaking for myself. One thing I do not do is I do not go on social media. So if you're trying to do it by that venue, that is ill effective. So, same here. And if you have a question or concern, I would much rather receive a hundred phone calls during the snowstorm. Then, for this board, the contractor, the police department, or any other citizens of this town. To beat each other up. For weeks on end. And I appreciate Paul's diplomacy and, uh.
He said.
Okay. His diplomacy and trying to answer some questions. Um, the timing for him leaving right now is kind of poor. I wanted him to verify, uh. Even though I don't go on social media, I'm going to tell you that. I have people that are my friends that like to screenshot things and send them to me because they think it's funny. Um, I don't think it's funny, but. For anybody in this town to think that there is a mole or leak in either one of the three of us, that this letter that was out there, the contractor delivered that letter himself. To Paul. The letter that was in question. Edward's letter. Edward's letter, um, so I just want to put that to bed right now. I do not like social media. That's one of the reasons why. We did not have that conversation with Paul. The contractor himself gave Paul that information. So, and I think that in his, in his defense. I think that he was trying to alleviate some of the questions and concerns of the citizens of this town, and he thought that that might be a good venue for, uh. Publicizing that information to you folks, right, wrong or indifferent, but that is what it is. Um. That's kind of the, the highlight of Paul's letter. I think I touched upon everything, but. Uh, we do have a contingency policy moving forward and actions in place. Um. In part with, with our, our work, but in the contractor himself. Um, a reputable insured. Um, company is going to assist him and, and back him up, back him up too, in the event of breakdowns, breakdown happening. Um, and for anybody to say that, well, it's you guys should have done your due diligence when you did your inspection and make sure he's got nice shiny new equipment. Um, most people know, I worked with the town of Ospey Highway Department. We just purchased a two thousand and twenty four Western Star six wheeler all equipped for the snow. That cost two hundred and ninety two thousand dollars. So we, as a town and a tax money, cannot expect anybody that we sign a contract with to have a fleet of equipment like that. If we want to do that, we need to have a hard conversation about how much as a town we are willing to spend to start a highway department. But to have a contract that's, that's something that we can afford and we've become accustomed to, to expect a contractor to have. Three hundred thousand dollar six wheelers at their disposal in their fleet, I think is, is too much to ask. I really do, um. So that, you know. He does have a, we do have a backup plan in the event that there are breakdowns, but everything breaks down. That's the point I was getting at. I have a brand new truck that I drive from town of Ospey Highway Department. It was broke down twice this storm. It has twelve thousand miles on it. Random things break down every day. It, it stinks, it's the nature of the job, but given what we're doing, given what we're doing, we're plowing and grading the roads at the same time this time of year. We just are. And it's tough going, it's tough sliding, it's hard on this equipment. Especially when you're pushing that amount of snow. So. And unfortunately, that's all I've had time to focus on this, this week, so I don't have anything else besides roads, so.
I had a. A couple items that I did, uh, on March, uh, point. I met with Lake's Region Planning Commission. With, uh, Mark and, uh, this guy was Matt Rose. We did, uh, basically, we did tour the transfer facility, made some recommendations for safety, updating the facility, uh, a couple signs. That we should be putting in place and Mark agreed. He's also stated that he writes grants for, uh. Different, uh, transfer facilities and all that, so I kind of. Pushed him to do, okay, write a grant up for, uh, the shelters over, shelter roofs over the containers. And, uh, in the engineering design. So he's in processes doing that, so we'll see how that comes out. Um, also did a tour of the fire department on. Three twenty two. Get myself a mirror with the. Chief from the fire department and. Couple of recommendations, looking at it and stuff like that he made and things that they want to update and stuff, so we'll be addressing those situations as we go along. So that's it for me.
I just had, I did have something. So I like, hopefully some other people attended the breakfast at the fire department this weekend. It was absolutely delicious and, and as the one thing so here sometimes is good for is giving praise. And I will add to that, Brandy's, uh, pancake, pancake private secret recipe, whatever, is absolutely delicious, um. And I know it was storm related that you guys had to postpone it, but I think it worked out great. The way it worked because we went right from that to the Easter egg hunt at the library and for what it's worth. Maybe we try to plan that in the future. I think that was a great transition from breakfast to the. Easter celebrations.
Absolutely. The Fire Department Association would like to get the nonprofits together and start planning our events in conjunction with each other moving forward.
And, and the Easter egg hunt at the library was awesome. I could not believe. I would venture to guess there are sixty kids. At that, for the Easter egg hunt.
Yeah, great.
Saying yes, and, uh, it was, it was awesome and they, the. The staff at the library, I have to be cautious not to say the G word. The, uh, staff at the library did a fantastic job, uh. As always, and, uh, it was my grandson head of all I have done, so thank you very much. So I very excited to do on that. Thank you.
Yeah, that's good, that's good. Um, next town administrator report.
So. Two things, um, one, I've been. Doing the annual facility report for waste management to get that on, um, and send it to me, yes. Um, and is also getting a report completed for Primex for our work with comp, um, unemployment. And property insurance that, you know, we usually have to get every year. Um, the next thing I have that, you know, the board is all aware of is a task list that's in front of you. Please let me know if you have additions that you want added to benefit things.
How old do you want?
However long. But, um. So pretty much I have it in order from what hasn't been started yet. I have the priorities on there. Um, and I have very much the one that's been completed, but if there's anything in addition that you want. On that list. I'll ask that you, you know me, let me know tonight and we'll keep it updated so that way there's a progress for everything we want to see and do have done.
I'm sure he's done, right? But we didn't have it on the list.
No, it's not a list, but that is.
Talk to him.
But that's all I had.
Is that anyone connected from the internet?
It is new and connected. All set up. Worked perfectly.
So. Is it on a, uh, not a Wi-Fi network? I want to be able to print from my house and send you.
All right, department reports. Let's start with, uh, the chief outreach.
All right. Uh. There's copies of our monthly stats if anybody wants some, and I'm going to leave copies of my business card and the sergeant's business card in case you don't have. Our phone numbers are the dispatch phone numbers, so that way if you do need to report any sort of an issue, both those numbers are right on there.
On, we didn't get a top.
Oh, sorry. I put them up there, but I got sidetracked from, uh. Sidetracked from our previous. Um. What will they like get? All set there?
Thank you.
So in the month of March, us as a police department handled three hundred and forty six calls for service. One arrest was made. We had sixty six motor vehicle stops. Three motor vehicle accidents and the K nine was deployed out four times. Three of which for, for community events. So she brought out and did some of the community events. She's at the pancake breakfast. We did. A wellness event at the elementary school, and then she also was at the library coffee hour. Um, and then we, we were on a track once, which was a believed to be impaired subject that had fled from a. Motor vehicle accident and we tracked her approximately a quarter mile until the track went dead and there's a set of tire checks, which were, I believe, the person was picked up. Any questions, comments? She's, she's incredible. Her and I actually, at the end of this month, are going to National Certs and Mets, two lists will be certified in. Drugs patrol work, tracking in her articles.
Very good question.
Yes, sir.
You have any drones yet?
No.
That meant the, uh, dog search at all?
I have not looked into that, but. Maybe worth looking at.
I've seen it. I've seen it deployed to help find and track suspects and to keep an eye on. An officer, if you're handling the dog. With your friends, acting alone.
Yeah, it'd be something for us to look at for sure. Yeah, thank you. Everybody else? Gentlemen?
You know what? I didn't have a chance to play. It's not that important. You knew it off the top of your head, right? But I know that over the last three months, we're up significantly from last year. As we were over about, we were sixty something calls last month and eighty something, I think, January. Or well, over a hundred calls busier than we were in twenty twenty three.
Okay.
Hi, thanks, man. Thank you.
Next up, fire department chief.
I know.
All right. You did ask the questions. Yeah, I mean, you, you did ask if anybody had questions.
Yeah. Thought somebody had a question. If you do, I'm here.
Sorry, go ahead.
All right. Twenty seven calls from March for us bringing us to eighty for the year so far. Uh, we're right about on par with where we were last year. Uh, of those called eighteen were medical emergencies, three tree and wire down calls, two service calls, three motor vehicle accidents and one building fire. Uh, the one building fire was a mutually into Porter. Uh, we sent three staff and they left one in town to cover it in town. Um, one of the motor vehicle accidents, we did have a little bit of entrapment over on Townhouse Road. Uh, we did actually use a tow truck to pull it out from between two trees, so we could actually get the individual out of the vehicle. Uh, two of our members this month went to a Ford Fire Warden training over in Tufton Borough and got our annual refresher. And we did, three of them were Peter Hart, we're still waiting on license.
Any questions? What's licensing?
The FCC has some licenses to actually use the frequencies, so we have to wait for them to assign us.
Once I'm here, you'll be disclosing it then?
We don't really know. I would expect within a month, but it depends on how hard they have to coordinate to get frequencies that won't interfere with our neighbors.
And. Man.
Yes.
To you back on. So on the repeater, there are some faces here. We didn't see a town meeting where we talked about the repeater. Once that's up and about, so that is a, a radio frequency for the town of Effingham. There is a base station that's in the office, there always has been when we used to do this before. But it wasn't quite as effective without a repeater, so that's what this is for. Once it's up online, not only will these gentlemen be able to communicate with each other, but the contractors, both summer and winter, will have radios too. So that is going to be yet another avenue for communication moving forward for our room contractors. Namely, you have a storm like we, what we just had, to add to, you know, Paul's letter about communication, that's going to be another avenue. Unfortunately, it's not up and running now. Um, but it will be, will, will be before next winter, so.
Any additional questions? See Rebecca's walking around the building. They'll wait for her.
I sent you.
Thank you. She's like walking through. You're up, Rebecca. Hey, you can grab that shirt if you want.
Here. How tall are you? Yes. Yeah. It's okay, gentlemen.
Yeah, Rebecca.
Hey, hey, hey.
Well then.
Okay, I'm all set.
Do you want to, you want to open up a question? Do you want to just tell us what you, what you got going on?
Haven't, there's not that much going on, although I will say, I will just remark because I just noticed it. That, and this has nothing to do with my job. Um, that the, don't park between the signs that protects handicap parking. If that's what it protects, the sign. On this side should be further down because where it is now, people park just beyond it and block both handicap racks. And so the, the no parking should extend across so that no one parks right in front of the racks.
Got that feeling?
That makes sense. And I couldn't get somewhere. Hitting with it, but. I thought of it, I thought of it actually last week or the week before.
Thank you.
I should. Bring it up. Um. Otherwise, um, no, I've just got the report. I don't think I've got. Anything else going on. I mean, I got a lot of people scheduled for April visits. I don't think I'm going to go out on Thursday. Spring is coming late this year.
So it looks like you had, uh, four activities for, uh, March. Permits?
Uh, I had, uh, nine.
Oh, you got this. February is in there too.
Yeah, so I've got, I've got, um. I issued, issued nine permits. And then I don't actually have my copy of my, my little short handwritten report. In front of me. Because it's the detail I go to. This, this really just is an overview and then gives you my hours work. Um. And really the only thing to report is things are starting to pick up. You know, I've got, I've already got. Four applications, four or five applications in front of me already for April.
For a new home or?
No, uh, one of them's a new home, uh. What we just processed, we are getting a few of those. We had, I was just, I just did the. I just did OEP's, uh, ask for a report for all of twenty twenty three. And. And our. Single home builds have gone up again. So that's, you know, they asked for that information, because they they cross reference it with the census to do a whole. Thing about development in the state, so I I tell them how many, how many building permits we've issued for homes. They don't include include manufactured housing, but they asked for a single and and dual and multi, of which we haven't had any. So we have, we have picked up a bit on that, I think it was just one on here. One permit, yeah, there was one house on this and one that's down at the bottom here that came in, but came in right as I was finishing the report. And I haven't, so, yeah, but you know, still, you know, we're getting RVs, because it's the. The season just opened for getting your hundred and fifty day RV pass. And getting sheds, as always, there's always sheds, people always do sheds. So.
Any questions?
Do you um? Are you, do you, are you kept up with the the uh house bills that are passed, that they send you that information that?
I.
Containing to?
I do, um I'm on planning, um which is a um. Uh something that the municipal association keeps the mailing list, in fact, I just sent you guys. And planning board and a thing that I'd done about fees, you and I talked about that, so I just sent you a memo in the email about that. Um but they they send a newsletter out, announcement on planning every Friday. Which has all the new stuff, but then running at the top of it is is bills and things that they think, and I read the municipal associations. Um summary of legislative diversity and stuff like that, you know, most of it doesn't apply to me so much as it might apply to. Either you folks or the planning board in terms of actually making or changing policy. Um very little of it is about directly about enforcement, but still, I do try and keep up with.
So I, so I ask, because and do we have anybody in? Is it my word? So hopefully she will correct me on bill number, I think it's twelve fifty-eight, they just passed that. House is a bipartisan bill that is expected to pass state senate. And it is stating that municipal municipalities shall, sometime, shall. Shall allow for a second ADU.
I have been following that, I thought that was interesting, because we do allow for a second ADU already. The question, so how it will change us?
Sorry to cut you off, there is no lot size requirement with this house bill. And the town of Effingham currently has a lot size requirement for an ADU.
Right. Great, so we would need to, we need to adjust the regulations to that and something else that would. Be appropriate to look into at the same time, actually, is how the ADU. Um part of the zoning ordinance and the two family dwelling part of the zoning ordinance, which have a very definite overlap. How they affect each other, because if you've got, if you've got um.
Mike, please, all right.
Currently, we've got zoning requirements for two family that we don't have for ADUs, which. Seems like, seems like we should make them all match somehow. It to some degree, I I mean, I certainly understand with the idea that an ADU, given the concept behind it, everybody here know what an ADU is?
Yeah.
A granny flat. An in-law apartment, whatever, your mother-in-law apartment.
So I'm surprised that that Mr. Pittman is, the moderator's voice didn't come into my head about afternams and stuff like that, and I apologize. It's such a great.
Yeah, um so. I, to me, the 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 salient thing about an accessory dwelling unit as compared to. A just a two-family dwelling is that the key part about an accessory dwelling unit is one. That either the original building or the or the new other building or apartment be owner occupied. Um and the and then one of them can be a rental or it can have their mother-in-law. Um and the other is that there's usually a uh a size limitation. So you don't get huger and huger and huger, so you retain. Yeah, square footage, and ours may be a little small, I don't know, they vary, um but. The 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 two-family dwelling, which is an as right, it doesn't even go in front of the planning board. Has has less limitations on it, um and but some more limitations, and it just seems to me that in terms of the regulation. The ordinance itself, it would make sense to look at those two side by side and decide. Where they are different and where they are the same and and are we making sense? It's silly if someone has an apartment above their garage already that they're allowed as a right. To not be able to call it an ADU. Or if someone has an ADU. To not be able to convert over to rental. If we haven't quite figured out what we think the difference is, I mean, perfectly all right, in my opinion, to say, no, you can do this or you can't do that. But I think we should think it through, I think that the ADU part was put in there without looking back at what was going on with. To them, and I'm fully in in support of the 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 two that we had, I was actually the one that argued for allowing for a second standalone. So what that means is that is that the state said as a right, you can put. A accessory dwelling unit attached to your house. But that if you wanted a second one, um if you wanted to do one that was in a separate building. You had to um go through a special permitting process, that it was not a right to have that second. Accessory dwelling, second unit, um detached. Um and then the difference is that they would say whether or not you want it attached or detached, it's still a right in the state to do it. So that's what the bill says, and there are a lot of towns that 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 said no, the detached one, which is probably why this bill came up. If a higher percentage of towns had just gone ahead and said, well, yeah, of course you can put a barn out back. Um the the point about whether you need ex- extra acreage, I guess the argument is that if the acreage will support it.
It is actually a second building, so that's those with this bill. Discusses the lot size, not necessarily with ADUs, but. Essentially, what they're doing is, this is for everybody, they're trying to. Take care of our housing prices that we had, workforce housing prices.
Right, and there are a bunch of, there are a bunch of different tools we can use, and this is one of them. You know, in some of our cities, regulating uh short-term rentals, Airbnb's is another one. Not because we don't like people renting out their houses, but because out outside people are um are buying up. You know, middle income housing and turning it into seasonal rentals, and so it's just taking, it's just taking it off the market, very different from someone who might. Rent rent part of the house that they live in, so yeah, it's it's a big problem. And and quite honestly, I mean, it's been hours talking about philosophy of land use planning, but all the philosophy from. Um thirty, forty years ago, that brought about two acre zoning and everything that went with it. Which was designed to protect rural communities from. A level of density that rural residents treasured has turned out to kind of backfired. And there's a lot of um focus on a new kind of planning and new urbanism, where in fact, you balance um. Large lots that want to stay large with closer denser builds that are as appropriate and can provide better density. So you look at, you look at a place, you know, you'd look at, you'd look at lots all up and down school streets, say, or, you know. Any other place you might pick in town, where it's already partially dense, and you'd say, well, it's crazy to say that you need two acre lots there. If someone has got four acres, shouldn't they be able to make three lots there, because every lot on either side of them. It's like three quarters of an acre, so that's part of an approach to, you know, putting density where there already is density. And then having the open space elsewhere.
Everybody in the audience, questions?
All right. Question, well, there is a question.
I have not.
Oh, okay. Duck it, like, because twelve fifty-eight passes, which you never know what these things they can take us with in the land. Planning board is the one who writes your zoning ordinance amendment, so that would be a thing to bring to the planning board. As opposed to say.
Any additional questions for Rebecca?
I have a question in general, not for Rebecca, but for the for the select and win insurance.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, okay, I was just, I was late coming in, I apologize for that, but. I was wondering, what's the plan for the big storm that's coming Wednesday into Thursday and Friday as far as making sure? The roads get bad?
My plan is to stay home.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Okay. And everyone wants to come back one during my office hours and geek out on my interviews, I'd love to see it.
Uh that's beautiful, chairman, sir, you can. Yeah, we're good. Is that how you wish? Public comment if you want.
Yeah, I think I'm gonna go that route with it. Public comment.
Good, go for it.
But first, uh on business, um approval of the budget committee, twenty twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five schedule.
Good. Improve the budget, then we. Support that budget schedule.
Okay. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. And budget committee members.
Uh we did have one, uh annual annual uh post closure report for E S.
Tell me the mystery question.
Chuck was talking, you wanted to have a little discussion on this, this was before we realized the due date for that one was March thirty-first, when I had you sign it. I don't know if Chuck still wanted to have a discussion, but I didn't see any response on it.
I only, the two question, once you answered the question, I, we were drove down and said, hey, we need to do anything for post follow-up, the answer is no, we're good.
All right.
I'm good.
Then we can skip this one, you say anything.
But I did have a question, can we post that report up on our site so people can see it?
I know it's.
And the question, the question I had for everybody, this question, since the report came in, and it mentioned some different activities. And I wasn't clear at the tail end of the summary, whether we had it to do as an additional follow-up. I had Caitlin reach out to the engineer, the engineer said, no, we're good, so that's what that was.
Go ahead.
Before you choose to open up public comment, um Melissa had asked that if everyone could state their name before they.
I don't have the comment, yeah. Uh announcements, uh yeah, the board of selectance office will be closed April tenth for training.
Probably Thursday this week too.
Three, Thursday.
I I will have to go to work.
We'll see you Wednesday. Yeah.
So take care of your.
All right, now we come to the good part, public comment. Okay, state your name.
State your name.
State your name. Oh, Grover Fisher. I don't know the town, I was paying you more, you're just man, you're kind of nervous, you know, man, but they owe me. I've been here forty years, but my house was eight hundred eighty thousand, that's about what I paid in taxes, but my concern is they plow it. I don't know if they got a bend down against me, that they know Big Farm, they live down the end of Movement Swamp Row.
Can you tell me where you live?
Where's since well?
Wilkinson Swamp Row, two forty-three. The contract states that to be plowed to my driveway, turned around. It hasn't been done. They stopped in that forest you, turning around there, I asked one of the fellas, are you gonna wing it back at least? Oh, no, I don't have full drive. I'm like, you know, I just don't, I don't understand why they went down. With the snow, turning around like that way, there was a whole big windmill that come out from my mailbox. Out to the middle of the road, and it stayed there the whole storm, the next thing would be. Mister Murphy and I greeted Wilkinson Swamp Row this afternoon, to the fact that I spoke with Kevin Downs that. If you fill in the holes. When the plow goes over, it's not gonna be a puddle of water, there might be a little bit of water, but not graphic, and with some bad holes. In the middle of the road that we have to straighten out, and if we hadn't, when the snow got melted, the big puddle of water splash, you see. Um as far as, I don't understand why the town doesn't grade or look at the roads and say, okay, this should be graded before this storm. Like today, a lot of the roads out there, that road, I can name a lot of that should have been at least York Drake or something. To fill in those potholes, this happened the last storm, we had bad pothole, we got the storm, they went plowing, they go pretty quick. Plowing it, went right over the hole, there was water, you know, when it melted, water in those holes and. That's what made the road so bad this time, last time of them, you know, not being filled in a little bit, so they couldn't plow it, you know. It's been a funny season, you know, if we know, I mean, flowers, they, I bought a road till with my garden, it was. And just snow, so we, so I rode till that snow, right, and just to see how much frost is there to get out of it. There weren't no frost, ain't no frost that make it grow, then we were grading today, so. My big concern was, why did they not go to the contract states my driveway?
Yeah, so the contract actually states past your driveway, not to your driveway, you're supposed to go to the classics road sign, which is well beyond your driveway, the last driveway, the right-hand side. That's what the contract says. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna call a spade a spade, when a cloud drop truck goes by my road, they don't turn around there, so I have a windmill, it's into my driveway that I have to deal with. I think you'll find the majority of the people in this room, they have to deal with the same thing, when the plow goes by their house, they have a windmill. What you've become accustomed to, Grover, they used to plow to your driveway, so they, let me finish, please, they plowed your driveway. So they could turn around, our contractor's not turning around there anymore, that's why your driveway is not.
Turn around down the street then?
They turn around down the street.
Down the street, that's fine, but why didn't, when they come back, at least, they're in my driveway, I don't care about the fact that, you know. And why wasn't it winged back, you know, I mean, this past storm, there are no storms.
So now I'll get on to the other points you made, you just made the statement, you you were rotating your garden. So we got this false sense of security this fall, spring, I did clean up, I did winter clean up my own house.
We're losing track here, I'm asking why you didn't wing it back, why?
I'm gonna tell you that.
Go ahead.
So if you were rotating your garden, that means.
A couple days ago, it was last come when a week or so ago, I'm sorry, but.
You want me to answer your question, you have to stop interrupting me.
Okay, go.
Okay. The roads are too soft to wing them back, to wing a road back and make it wide, you have to sit over on the edge. When the road, when the ground is so soft and there's no frost, that you have puddles that keep forming in your roadbed. And you have water in the ditch lines, and you put a forty thousand pound truck out there on the edge of the road, what do you think is gonna happen? It's gonna sink out of sight, so you can't wing back the roads, Grover, the roads are too soft.
But they did, and he stopped at Forest View, turned around there, each storm that he winged back, whether it was frozen.
I'm confused, because you said they do, why didn't they wing it back, but anyway. You gotta clarify some of this.
Sure.
So what had happened? So what's happened is, um they've they've only gone to Forest View, they haven't gone to Grover's house. They haven't gone.
So they're not going to the.
Not on.
Certainly haven't gone beyond.
And what we've done is, uh we've plowed, my stepfather in my truck, he's gone down, plowed two Grover's house. There wasn't anybody that went past there, and and not only just uh going back, but just plowing in general, so. During the whole storm, it didn't happen, I think that's where we kind of got lost in in that conversation, but that's, that was mostly the concern. That was the the first part of it. So as far, I mean, in the contract, they're supposed to plow to that classics road sign. Yeah, which is just past it. Yeah, and if that wasn't happening, this is the first knowledge we have of that. You know, my assumption is, and. That somebody, yourself, your stepfather, you said? Yeah, yeah. Plowed it, so when I do my road checks. Right. I'm none the wiser, it's taken care of. And it was, and that was what I was gonna say. And and I do appreciate anybody that steps up and volunteers and helps out like that, as far as. The puddles and filling in them, it's it's so wet, what do you, you fill it in with what, gravel? And it's gonna be a sloppy mess, we've got this false sense of spring, it's not spring, it's still winter. Graders typically do not go out, what we've been doing with our summer road contractor, and Mr. Downs running the grader. Is taking stone and it's just putting a Band-Aid on it, it's it's a Band-Aid on a bullet wound. And that's all you can do, because it's still winter, we still, I mean, for you to say, how come the grader isn't out there, what about the York rate? We have a snowstorm coming tomorrow with another eighteen inches of snow. I mean, you typically, not to sound like, you know, I, I don't mean to be fresh, but I mean, if it snowed in July and it made a habit of that. Well, then we would become accustomed to, you know, alternating between grader and grading the roads, making them saw, making them smooth. And plowing the snow off the road, but we don't, I mean, it is, it's New Hampshire, it's Effingham, and it is still winter here. Even though the groundhog said something different, the calendar, calendar said something different, it is still winter, and unfortunately, without any, um, frost in the ground. And having that false sense of security, it's, everybody thinks we should be upgrading the roads, and you, you, you can't. I mean, you, you disturb that soil and a hundred-foot stretch of road that might have a hundred potholes on it. Is gonna have two hundred potholes on it, because you're gonna loosen that up, and you're gonna make that material more alive. And the problem is, and it's just like the potholes on Pine River Road and the coal patching. I believe that got addressed today, some of it, um, we get complacent and we, we. Are all busy people, and we, we drive like sheep, that's my favorite saying. Is sheep travel our roadways, and you, you follow the same exact tire tracks. If you have a pothole that's small, like this, on a Monday, it's gonna be that big on a Friday, because we all keep driving right through that pothole. You got water in there, you hit that water, and it splashes out the material, and that pothole just gets bigger, bigger, bigger. If you dodge that pothole, it wouldn't be that big. But you, it's very difficult to maintain the roads right now, and it's certainly. I mean, we will certainly do our best, and I do believe that some, um, there's been minimal activity on that road, but some has been addressed. But if you reach out to us and say, hey, can you at least get some stone on that road? And you're doing it now, the gentleman's hearing it, he's gonna hear it from me, we'll get some stone. Potholes on Pine River Road were a priority that is more traveled road, not that you guys are any less than anybody else, but, um. And we did put some stone on Simon Hill Road last week, I believe that was last Friday. Um, we had some very bad potholes, some, um, some complaints on Simon Hill Road, this time of year, it's. You gotta go in through Ospey to get there, um, it's not plowed all the way through. But if you, if you let us know, we will get out there, and I do try to get out and check the roads as much as I can.
You know, like. You know, remember about not being plowed, my other one, each time I come here, I say to the select people, put one of the pack. Richard Seaman was one of them, also saying, we gotta widen that road from the stones to the stones on the walls. The fact that the plow keeps hitting it, and just before Murphy's out, that bad corner. Be gone flying around that corner, you'll miss him, that road really needs to be opened up. You got, you had, when I moved in there, it was just me and the glass, then Murphy moved in, and now there's eleven. Home people living on that road, and, and I can name six people from that go from Port Edward to Port Feeder. Cause it's easy to, all things that run around, to down Wilkinson Swamp Row, they use it as a fellow pair, you know? And even all went along. As I say again, I wanna, you know, you take it on the advisory, and I advise you to get it done, the fact that I'm sick of pulling over. And having, you got all these people living on Swamp Row now, they really need to take some more of those trees down on the town roads. And open that road up a little bit, and when you get a, an emergency vehicle down there. In this past, this last storm, my wife has C O P D, and she, you know, very, you know, she could get any time that. She needs somebody there, and would have been almost unpathable for them to get there, so at that point, the other thing is, you have it on the back of your mind to say, okay. Let's get out and see what Grover's talking about, about the trees on his corner there, and a few other spots that are really need to be opened up, you know? They opened it up last year down the other end, I seen they left those power there, but I'd really like to see how you. Will share a look at what needs to be down on Swamp Row. Um, Tim thought this house, right where he took all those trees out. The one runs right down the side of the road, should be trenched down, so if you got time, you can look at that, I got hogged and bred.
Go ahead. Yeah, cause we gotta, we gotta move on with, we're talking about the winter roads and stuff.
We'll take a look at it, we'll take a look at it.
You know, we'll, we will contact the, the contractors.
I went all the way.
Appreciate it.
Next.
I'll touch on it. I've been out plowing on the roads and the towns. Of course, surrounding towns in Effingham for a long time, and I do develop my roads and stuff. And, uh, I know that a lot of the winging back that hasn't been done, could have, and traditionally not done. The roads haven't been soft, that soft all winter, I haven't seen a big truck, uh, except for one maybe. Might have been one ten-wheeler this year, out on the roads. And that one didn't look to me like it should be on the road, and fortunately, I've never seen it again after that storm. But if you're not gonna put trucks out there, then the pickup truck, boat, they should have more of them, because most of the roads. During the, uh, morning hours, they're not opened up for the community, even in small storms. Uh, my road, Hobbs Road, that thing sometimes is one pass, this last storm, obviously there was issues. But the full length was made one pass wide, and even when he drove out, he didn't hit one of the other tankings like, oh, how we used to. One, one path for one car, people are turning around in my driveway, so let people go for a couple days even after that storm. Um, the storm, the level, how bad the roads were, yeah, at like eight o'clock at night in Effingham. Was something I hadn't experienced before getting around town. I would like to know that we have a bond, I'd like to know what it covers, I would like to know that the vehicles are insured, registered, and inspected. I'd like to know that the insurance companies, those are insured for plowing. And specifically for municipalities, things like WalMarts and municipalities are super central. So many insurance companies won't cover that, and I don't know any insurance company that's paying out for an unregistered vehicle. Be in on the road if somebody in this town gets there. So hopefully you guys are doing your due diligence, I put in ten questions that are pretty specific for ninety-one A's. So I'm gonna be looking for some answers, guys, because honestly, you don't need brand-new westerns, uh, six and ten-wheelers out there. I haven't plowed for twenty years here, and you had some older equipment that was decent enough, and showed up and was maintained, and was out on the roads. And got the job done, I don't know what's been going wrong, but it isn't just been this one storm. And I was good with not coming in and saying anything all winter long. But this was, I've been just waiting for this to happen, because it was evidence. So thanks for listening.
Yeah, and your ninety-one A's noted.
Just a suggestion, as you look at that ninety-one A and the questions there, maybe a call to Primex to verify some of this.
We already done that, Mark.
Wonderful.
Right.
And I heard you guys wrote plowing, uh, for the town, a couple of pressing yourself, which is fine, I mean, I did it when I sat out there. We had issues with ice storms, I'm out cutting cloud. Just a note for the average person, since we were giving a little information out, most insurance companies don't cover your plowing, your plow.
I understand, Mike.
So some, not just you, but anybody on the road, you run up to Hannaford, you hit somebody with your plow. Unless you've got your insurance company on board, average citizen, you're probably not insured.
That it?
That's it, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, alright.
Anybody else?
Okay.
Just go ahead. So, state your name, please.
Jim Morris. Let me, I'm just trying to phrase this correctly. It's my understanding, today, Chris, you said, we went out and inspected the trucks. I heard that, did I?
You did.
So Leo, you look like maybe you didn't.
No, in the past, the last summer, the truck, last October. You know what you're referring to?
Referring to your quote. We inspected the trucks, so you did not inspect the trucks after the storm.
We did an equipment inspection for the contract before we signed the contract.
Very well.
That was not so long.
Um, and at that time, um, was there a truck on the lot that was not registered?
Uh, yes.
And that road was perhaps on the Effingham Public Roads this past Sunday?
Yes.
And that vehicle was also not inspected, it did not have a current inspection, is that also?
That is correct.
Okay. And lastly, I couldn't tell, but it probably wasn't insured. If it was not registered and it was not inspected, there's a pretty good chance for me to think that it was not insured. So, I'm the head. Who's job, I'm sorry, Mr. Chan, which one of you is the liaison between the contractor? And the Board of Selectmen?
That would be Chris.
So Chris, um, we had a truck in that condition out on the road. I don't know if it was plowing, all I saw was that it had a wheel on, 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 on the ground, but. That's putting us in danger, isn't that?
So this is my fault, you know, that's, that's a good question on you, man.
You have free job. Yeah, you didn't do it.
I did, I, I did. I am the liaison, I am, I am not the one that is going to own the responsibility. For an unregistered vehicle being on the road, we have a contract with a private contractor, not an employee of the town of Effingham. We have everything in place within the contract and our requirements of what they need to do. When we did the equipment inspection. He had a horse in his yard, have you seen a horse on the road? So what if he had a vehicle in his yard? We have a requirement, and I made this, I already said this, so I like your grandstanding now. Because I've already said this and made it clear, when we did the equipment inspection before signing the contract. He had everything that met our requirements in both of these policies, the contract and a winter roads, inclement weather. And because of the way the winter has been, it hasn't afforded him to bring out these giant trucks that we asked for to be on the roads. And other breakdowns and things like that, so if you think for a second, before every single snowstorm. I or any of the past or any of the future liaison to the Board of Selectmen. That deals with the contractors is gonna be sitting in his yard, inspecting them before they go out on the road, you are sadly mistaken, that is never going to happen.
So now one of your contractors, you have discovered, was out, I don't know if they were plowing or not. But they were out on the public roads of Effingham with an unregistered vehicle, an uninspected vehicle, and probably an uninsured vehicle. If I were to do that, I would be cited in some way. Does that happen?
I don't have the authority to cite somebody. And it has been dealt with, and it has been addressed.
We didn't hear that.
Because, yes, you did, I said that at the beginning of this meeting again.
You said that.
I heard him say that when he was reading my letter.
We have addressed that, we have, we have.
They addressed an unregistered, uninsured, uninsured case. I guess it's all set, I'm sorry to waste your time.
It was, we had a non-public, it's required, basically, with the contractors, so we dress all.
Right, so I'm asking about this one specific situation, which I think was horribly wrong for all of us. To put ourselves and our kids.
And to add to what you said, and to add to what Paul just said, I did say earlier. That just this week, the contractor came in, did all of those other vehicles, because it was other vehicles that were larger. They came along these soft roads, and yes, they're too soft for the big trucks. You don't need a mechanical structural engineer to figure that out. Alls you have to do is, I can show you a picture of a gas truck, if anyone wants to see it on Hunter's Bridge Road.
I've given a road that understands soft better than any road in town.
So, you know, please let me finish, because, you know, you, you wanna take this opportunity to try to completely throw me under the bus. There's a propane truck, dry weather, this was yesterday, on Hunter's Bridge Road, David showed us, you saw. Registrations, the individual came in here, I said that earlier, the individual came in here and registered the vehicles, and is making all attempts. Even though the law states he has ten days, he's making all attempts before this snowstorm to get the two inspected.
Hey, I have one, my one more point.
One more point, please.
Um, you may not read Facebook, uh, many people in the town do, it's not a law, and it's not a requirement. But it is an excellent way to pass it for me.
It is not, it is poison.
It's, I don't care what you think about it.
I don't care what you think.
No, never mind, one person I find, let him pop, finish it up.
So, Facebook does not need to be voted on to be, to get things done or to be a mechanism. But it's a way to communicate, and it's as good as letters to the editor and the Conway Daily Sun. And it's a very fine way to say, did you know the sand pitch empty down at the, it's a very fine way to communicate, I'm sorry you don't like.
Do you know another way that's good to communicate, town meeting, were you there?
Not for sure.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
It's on the Facebook, though, you do have issues that we've read or you. Send a email to the town office or to my email, so I can be aware of it.
Not a problem.
Thank you, no, uh, Chuck.
So, what this last snowstorm pointed out is we have some management issues. Which have been raised, probably have been there for years through multiple administrations. But one of the things that I'm going to propose, and I've actually put it forth, we're gonna talk about it. Is even though the contract requires, as Chris said, all this stuff's supposed to be in place. We're actually gonna build a physical checklist, we're gonna add an additional step annually for both road contractors, the winter and the summer roads.
Sounds like a task list.
Very much like a task list, where we'll list the equipment, it'll list the drivers. It'll list the licenses, it'll list the registrations, it'll list the inspections, it'll list everything. And it will be included into the file, the written file contract in the Selectmen's Office. So that way, if this question ever comes up again, somebody can go in and pull the slip. And say, here are the, here are the vehicles we have, and it'll be up to the assigned person working with that contractor to make sure the list is kept up to date. If there are changes to the program. But, we, we've never had the issue, and I'm sure, like, a number. Well, you know, the thing, the thing is, the contract states it, and it's one thing to state it. What we failed on as an administration, not only this one, but multitude of past administrations. There wasn't a documentation process in place to validate that the select board had done its part of that validation process. I know Chris and Lady went out and took a look at the stuff. Right, wasn't documented, now we'll come up with an additional layer of work to document it, based on what's occurred. And we can move forward, and we won't have it happen again.
I wanna follow up with that, I think, well, Kevin, how long was Evans doing their plowing for, ten?
Seventeen years.
Yeah, so this is our first time we had a new contractor doing the winter plowing, so like Chuck said, we're learning. And I totally agree, you know, just gonna get a list set up and move forward. Uh, Dave, listen, I had to.
I know we did with a lot of issues, Dave, so, a lot of issues this last storm, the day after the storm, I was still plowed in. Within an hour, I reached out to Chris, he got right back to me. And within that next hour, he was up himself plowing my road to make sure I could get out. So I wanna say thank you to Mr. Seaman, because he helped him out and went to, you know, the extra distance to make sure that I wasn't stopped. Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome, and I apologize for putting the town in jeopardy by using my own personal truck. Even though I have insurance and I have a snowplow in front of it, and have thirty-six years. Been plowing, so you only know what insurance I have to have, for anybody that feels that I, I as a selectman put the town in jeopardy. Because I was doing so, I assure you I was not, and I feel that the town was more in jeopardy. For not taking part and doing our part and assisting to make sure the roads are clear.
According to my discussion with Primax today, you were operating as volunteer.
Which I've been volunteering doing a little bit for quite a few years, but anyway.
Um, I wanna let you know that the end of winter road on the High Watch side, there's a very large tree that fell down. I would say during the winter, very large, and if they hit it with, it's sticking out into the road, they're gonna hit it with.
That High Watch Road.
Yeah, right at the end of winter.
Yeah, I, I, I actually. Yeah, I I I actually talked to the contractor about that, the winter roads contractor. And I'm not gonna lie, I was hoping that when the wing would push it into the ditch.
Into the road.
Yeah.
Cause the white trucks. Um. On another subject, um Neighborhood Watch will be having a meeting on the tenth at six P M here.
Yeah.
Here. Ourself, sorry, they know who I am. Um, I'm kinda loud. Um. Tyler will be here. Um, JT's gonna be here, Randy might be here. And we have a nine one one New Hampshire operator coming, so we're gonna go. From the phone call to nine one one. To you guys and we're gonna learn what the process is. It is open to teenagers, well behaved teenagers, please. Um, if anybody wants to come.
You said six o'clock?
Six o'clock. I'll make cookies if you can get Grace to give you one out.
Just wondering, did, did anybody else, oh, Pat Murphy. Did anybody else did on the contract for plow?
No.
Nothing. What else are we gonna do? Gotta work with it.
Uh, anybody else, please.
Different subject. Uh, I don't know if the emergency management plan gets updated every five or six years, I think it's five. Which would have been last year, so I didn't know if that got done, so this is for the wood and fire chief and everything. And then um hazards mitigation didn't get done at the same time in Fall of nineteen. So if it's by year plan, both of those things are up. And probably should be pursued if you guys have the uh where to do that.
They are both on our radar and and that is a project that'll be coming shortly and.
Go ahead.
And they are on a to-do list. They are on a to-do list along with the, um, that goes along with the department head meetings that are starting April tenth, Friday. Yes, right? Well, oh, sorry. And the safety plan and um safety committee and stuff like that, so which, I think Chuck was interested in that as well. Our need for a safety uh committee and stuff, so those are all on our to-do list.
Is that only department heads or could I get in on that with being in charge of up in Ham Neighborhood Watch?
I don't have a issue with it, this is the board.
It it it's that. You're, you're facilitating.
Yeah, if you'd like to be a part of it, I can include you in the email chain. I know Caitlin was putting together, I think, an outlook calendar event. I will get you Mickey's email.
Yep, I I believe I have it.
Okay.
Same, same email, yeah.
And I have a email group for everybody and if anybody's a part of a town group that wants to be a part of this, please let me know, my email's on my card. And uh it's more or less just a chance for us all to get together and figure out what we can do to work together better.
Isn't that open to the public as well, Tom?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Good. Chief.
I'll, I'll sit, sir, thank you. Fortunately, Leo, this sounds. Steve Riegel.
Thank you.
Is that to-do list available for us to see?
See one. Yeah, I'll see why not. We put on a website.
On the website, does that work for you, Steve?
Yeah, would that be under the selectmen's?
I would put it under the slot, me too.
Okay, yes, yes, thank you.
Appreciate it. John. Anybody else? Elaine.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I, I started this topic earlier before we started commenting, but what's the plan if. There is an issue for plow as of early start plow on Wednesday and Thursday, if the. Plow trucks are still having issues, what's your plan?
So the, the contractor has subcontracted, we will have all of the progress per language in our contract. And our policy, we will have, which we already know they exist because they have a contractor to D E T. Um, they have a contingency plan and a backup plan with a contractor digging those to assist them and aid them and bring trucks over. Um, to, for plowing purposes. We do have a, we do have a backup plan. So, and for what it's worth, that was what it's worth, that was something that was facilitated by the contractor. In the event knowing that we were having another big storm, that stuff breaks, he did go out and. So, and I would like to add too, that our summer roads contractor who previously did the winter, did do the winter roads contract. Uh, offered his, his companies, Evans Brothers Grader, were the operator that's sitting next to you. To assist our current winter roads contractor and again, that is something that they worked out together. And i- if needed, can continue and whatever compensation and stuff like that, that's, that's worked out. Um, and obviously Evans is our contractor, we have his insurance, so we don't have to hunt out for that, so. Um, but there are things in place, so to try to minimize uh any repeat. And I would like to add again, okay, I work for the town of Austin. I hope like, I hope my boss isn't watching this and is gonna, you know, yell, come in the office tomorrow, but. One point four million dollar budget, we ran ten or twelve, uh excuse me, ten or eleven trucks during this snowstorm. Between the hours of seven P M Saturday night and eleven P M, it snowed over three inches an hour. Even with forty-four miles of road, that's eighty-eight miles, by the time you finish your route at three and a half, four hours, when you get to your last road. Your first road has nine to twelve inches of snow. So yes, it was not unusual to see in three hours, ten inches of snow on the road. We did, we saw it. So, I did hear the comment here that it was unacceptable to see eight, ten inches of snow on the roadway. When it's snowing that hard at eight o'clock, y- you can't. This is gentlemen, sitting right here, I don't throw him under the bus, but he drives a truck for D O T. I'm sure he was dealing with the same thing, I know he was. So I know where he plows, plows through my town. Um, it's, when it's snowing that hard, it's unavoidable, it is, and. We didn't, we haven't seen storms like this in years, we just haven't. And as far as the winter roads contractor, I mean, we went six weeks without a snowflake falling out of the sky. So, I said it's been years. And that's been years, so.
Go ahead. Any else, anybody else? We're going non-public. Meaning?